There we go. Call to order of the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Thursday, September 5th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Ty Pinserga. Heavenly Father, we stand here before you to do your righteousness, to have your wisdom, to do the business of the city of Boynton Beach, and we pray for the well-being of all of our citizens in Boynton Beach, as well as our neighbors to the Bahamas. Boynton Beach is the closest part of the state of Florida to the Bahamas, and we will be working with them, not just today, not just tomorrow, but for the years to come, to see the survival of their community. And in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz. Commissioner Matt McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
President.
Commissioner Ty Pinserga.
Here.
Mayor, we have a call.
Wonderful. Any additions to leations or corrections to the agenda? Seeing none, may I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, hearing none, agenda is passed unanimously. Informational items by members of the City Commission. Vice Mayor, would you like to begin?
None at this time.
Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no disclosures or anything like that, but I do want to say that my heart goes out to the Bahamians, you know, for their devastation in their country, and I don't know if it's called Hurricane fatigue, but I'm kind of glad it's over with, and I'm glad that we made it out here in the city of Boynton as well as we did. I'd like to say to staff and the EOC group, I want to tell you all thank you for a job well done, thank you for assurance with your emails, although some people said that they did not receive them, I thank you for the ones I got, because I don't think I missed any, but I thank you for keeping me abreast, and thank you for letting me know that everything was all right. And I want to tell you, it's like I told some other individuals, we had people praying that never prayed before, keep it up, thank you, it works. That's it, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Romulus.
I would like to echo the sentiments of my fellow commissioner here to just send out just all the thoughts and prayers, and I know it's easy to say that in times like this, but we do actually, I personally mean it, where I've been praying for the residents and the citizens of Bahamas, and also the families who live here. We know we have a large community, some of our founding fathers here in the city of Boynton Beach are of Bahamian descent, so we send just our condolences for the lives that have been lost, and just our thoughts are with those people who, as they go through the recovery process. We will be discussing later on some recovery efforts and some relief efforts that we plan on participating in as a city in order to really help move this along. In addition to that, Mayor, I just, I am grateful that we got spared the brunt of this storm. I do want to just thank staff, Matthew Petty specifically, just for, just, you know, I would say after the Weather Channel, his name was the second name that I paid attention to the most, because his emails were keeping us informed, so just everyone on staff who sacrificed and stayed up and took time away from their families, PD, FD, our employees, Eleanor ICU, just everybody who really just took time aside from their personal lives and their families, you know, secured them and then came back and secured all of us here, the 77,000-plus residents who live here in the city of Boynton Beach. So I thank all of you for your dedication to the city, it means a lot to me personally and to my family, and I'm pretty sure to the 77,000 other residents here in this city. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Pinserga.
I don't have any disclosures, but I do want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues. I want to thank all the department heads, our emergency manager, Matt Petty, Deputy Chief Matt Pett, excuse me, and everybody involved in the EOC. I had the privilege to be there in the morning of when we, the beginning of the declaration of emergency, and I can't tell you enough how relieved I was to know that we are in such good hands, we have experts, we have excellent professionals, and I heard so many positive things, one of them being that people from other cities were calling us, because we were doing such a good job letting know, letting the public know what was going on and keeping them posted. So I want to thank everybody involved in the EOC and making sure that our city is prepared, if not over-prepared. Thank you so much to all of you.
Thank you. On August 21st, I attended a meeting with Cobra and Community Greening. I'm very excited to hear what Community Greening is going to be doing in our city, putting in fruit trees and shade trees, and really educating the community of the importance of trees. August 27th, we had our Quantum Park Overlay Development District meeting, and I think that was very good, and hopefully we can move forward with the building of an eco park. That evening, I met with the mayor of Carrefour, Haiti, Jude Edouard, to sing about how we can use our best practices here in Boynton Beach and teach our neighbors in our neighboring countries. On August 28th, I attended a networking event over at Bar Louie with Networking Beasts to help promote and raise money for the Community Caring Center. I'd like to thank our city's HR staff, who threw a wonderful health fair. I wasn't able to get a massage, but I heard everyone enjoyed theirs. You know, that afternoon, I also had another meeting with the president of Cobra. I don't know if the commission has learned, but the master plan has been submitted for the Boynton Beach Mall site, and one of the things that is a possibility is building a mid-sized arena there, and so I reached out to Cobra to get their support, to hopefully have dialogue with the county, so that we have high-class entertainment here in Boynton Beach. Again, I want to thank the wonderful job that our emergency management staff did and all the other... Huh?
Can he come up when you're finished? Matt? Petty?
You want to wait till announcements?
You want to do it then? Okay.
Okay. All right. And then, and just, you know, I was able to stop, I believe, on Sunday, and just see that everybody was prepared and everything worked well. And then yesterday, I met with the director of Feeding South Florida, Paco Valles, and I'm very happy to do the proclamation for them today. Is there any further informational items by the commission before we move on? Seeing none, we'll conduct our first public budget hearing for fiscal year 2019-2020, Proposed Millage and Tentative Annual Operating Budget.
Thank you, Mayor. Mara Friedrichsen, our finance director, is going to, we have a brief presentation. It will be a repeat a little bit for you, as we went through very similar discussions during our workshops in July. So we have made some changes as a result of the workshop from discussions with the commission, as well as changes in revenue estimates and what have you, so we have a synopsis of that. We'll show you those adjustments and then conduct our first adoption hearing.
Come on up, Mara. Oh, there you are.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Mara Friedrichsen, Finance Director. Okay, so tonight, the purpose of this hearing is, well, September 5th, 6:30 PM.
A little closer, so we can continue to hear you going in and out.
Sorry. So tonight is Thursday, September 5th, which is the first public budget hearing to adopt the proposed millage rate and tentative budget for 1920. Tuesday, September 10th, it will be our special city commission meeting to adopt the fire assessment, and Tuesday, September 17th, will be our second public budget hearing to adopt the final millage rate and final budget. I'm going the wrong way. Okay, so the purpose of this hearing tonight is to review, discuss, and/or amend the fiscal year 1920 tentative budgets with the commission. Our budget proposed right now is $226 million for all funds, $96.3 million for the general fund, which is 42.6% of all funds. We're going to provide an opportunity for comments from the public. The first hearing to adopt and propose the millage rate and tentative budget, and just to talk about some of our tentative budget revisions since our July workshops, which increased our general fund budget from $95 million to $96 million. The golf increased from $1.92 million to $2.19 million due to irrigation repairs, and then the local government surtax fund increased from $7,000 to $7,060 due to Fire Station One vehicle exhaust system. So this, you guys saw in the July workshops, it's just a breakout of all the funding sources of revenue. The majority of our funding sources, utility fees, $50.9 million or 22.5%, property taxes, $38.8 million or 17.2%, capital and bond sources are $34.6 million or 15.3%, and then transfers make up $16.6 million or 7.3% of our funding sources. This is an overview of all of our expenditures. General fund proposed for 1920 is $96 million or 42.6%. Your water and sewer fund is $50,939,770. Your solid waste fund is $11,389,923, and your golf course is $2,199,465. Your total enterprise funds are $64,529,158. Your internal service funds, fleet, is $8,962,586. Warehouse, $442,000. Self-insurance, $6,119,866. And then you have your special revenue funds, such as traffic safety, local option, public art, recreation, community improvements, and cemetery, which total $4,767,602. Your capital improvement projects are totaling $34,638. Parks and Recreation is $101,000 of that. Your general government's $8,305,000 of that, and your surtax is $26,231,500. Our total debt service funds are $10,200,000, which makes your total of $226,000, sorry. So these are some of the changes since our July workshops. Some of these, you'll see the first few line items reflect the changes that we talked about during the July workshops, and then the last few are our post-workshop. So in the July workshop, we talked about reducing the City Hall contract services for Inspector General, so that was a decrease of $20,000. We added the CRA-funded police officer and CSO for $99,598, and the CSO for $59,001. We increased contractual services for crossing guards due to Town Square, which was $30,000. We added a plans examiner at $97,978, and we also added $75,000 for the initial phase of the mobility plan, and all of those were from the July workshop discussions. Post-July workshops, we've added a police evidence technician, part-time, which is We have changed around the Recreation and Tennis Center, which actually created a savings. We eliminated some vacant positions and moved it to contractual services, so it actually saved about $17,738. And then the fire RMS system, which is $38,000. That system was actually budgeted in this fiscal year, and we're actually just rebudgeting it for next year, because it wasn't spent this year yet.
The project won't be complete by year end, so we need to lose that funding and refund it for next year.
Yeah. And so on the revenue side, so you'll actually notice, we did not increase fund balance, even with those increases, we actually decreased fund balance, or the use of fund balance, I should say, by $29,778 due to the revenue sources that are generated here. So we got a reevaluation of our property taxes, which increased $185,000. Unfortunately, the majority of that goes to CRA, so $243,000 of that's actually going to CRA.
Excuse me, please don't say unfortunately, we are the CRA. Thank you.
Yes, sorry about that.
They get the joy of spending it.
Yes, they get the joy of spending it. We increased our state projections for sales tax by $200,000. We also increased our fire ALS revenues by $200,000. We decreased our 911 surcharge by $30,000, and our CRA reimbursement for the extra police officer and CSO added $105,000. And as you'll notice, the decrease of fund balance is $29,778. So at our proposed workshop in July, we were proposing $1,316,433 of fund balance, and we're actually proposing $1,286,655 of fund balance. So these are the adjustments that we just looked at on the last page, broken out by the revenue sources and the expenditures. So on the revenue, you'll see a decrease of ad valorem taxes of $64,621, the increase of your state shared revenue by $200,000, the decrease of the 911 surcharge of $30,000, the increase of $200,000 for the ALS, the increase of $105,000 for your CRA, and then the decrease of the use of fund balance by $29,000. So the total changes are the $380,601. And on the expenditure side, the removal of the Inspector General contractual services of $20,000, the increase of $249,000 for the added police officer, the CSO, and contractual services for crossing guards, and then the decrease of $41,000 is just moving one police officer to uniform services. On the fire, that's the increase for the RMS services for $38,000. We added the plans examiner at $97,978. The initial phase of the mobility plan is $75,000, and the decrease for the reorganization in recreation of $17,738. So part of this process is also the truth and millage or trim. We're proposing a 7.9 millage rate, which is no increase for this year, and the actual tax increase is 4.75% for the trim calculations, over the rollback rate of 7.5418. This is an explanation of your rollback rate versus your tax levy. You'll notice we're proposing a 7.9% or 7.9 millage rate, which is not an increase, but our residents do experience an increase because of the increase in the property values, so the rollback rate is 7.5418. And that's the last I have for you.
All right. Any questions from the board? Yes, Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. Laurie, explain to me the crossing guards for Town Square. How many crossing guards and when will they be utilized?
It's not for Town Square. We've amended our contractual services to add five guards throughout the city at the schools. So that was just, yeah, yeah, that's all right. It's Mara's first time presenting our budget to the city, so you did, you did very well, Mara. Thank you.
You did well, but I just didn't know.
But you're, thank you for catching that. So we're adding five guards at five different schools throughout the city in areas where, you know, we've determined there's some safety issues. So it's about $72,000, $7300 per guard, because they're obviously part-time through their hours, so I added that to the contract.
The next question is, since we added that in five guards, is there any room in there, like, for pay increases for the guards that's presently serving?
That's up to the private contractor, and I may need to lean on the chief. I think they made adjustments, and we increased our contract last year for them to increase wages, because I know you.
Right, they did do it, because I was concerned, because I was approached, but I'm just saying, is anything like for the future?
Did they build that in our contract?
Michael Gregory, Police Chief. No, that's a relationship between the workers and their contractor. We just pay the contract rate, and this year, we're piggybacking off of, I believe, the Spohkewa Tones contract. They had a better, they had a better rate for the employees to get paid, so we paid the flat fee to the contractor, they paid the employees, there's no particular rate increase planned.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Seeing none, any questions from the audience? Seeing none. Moving forward with the proposed resolution number 19-087, adopt the proposed millage rate for the general fund for the fiscal year 2019-2020. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, as provided in Section 2 of the resolution, the millage rate for the 2019-2020 fiscal year is 7.900 for the general fund. The second and final public hearing on the millage is September 17th, 2019, at 6:30 PM, here in the commission chambers at Intercoastal Park. The proposed millage rate is 4.75% above the computed rollback rate of 7.5418.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution Number 19-088, adopt the tentative.
Excuse me, Mayor, excuse me, before we go any further, we thank the young lady, I'm just saying this is your first time, but it'd be Robert, we don't say thank you to Tony. Tony, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Tony. Resolution Number 19-088, adopt the tentative budget for the general fund and all other funds for fiscal year 2019-2020.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion?
I ask for the public as well on this.
Okay. Any discussion for the, from the public regarding the general fund for 19 to 2020? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, as provided in Section 21 of this resolution, the second and final public hearing on the budget for 2019-2020 will be September 17th, 2019, 6:30 PM, here in the commission chambers at Intercoastal Park.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to announcements, the human res... Danielle?
Good evening. My name is Danielle Goodrich. I'm a human resources administrator, and I'm here to announce the speed hiring event that the Human Resources and Risk Management Department will be hosting on September 21st, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, at the Hester Center. So applicants who are interested in this event are encouraged to go to our city website, boynton-beach.org, and by clicking on the "Join Our Team" link. They should apply to any positions they feel they qualify. The event positions are identified on the city's website by speedhiringevent/positiontitle. So for example, speedhiringevent/parkranger. Positions will close on September 16th, and we will be reviewing applications periodically. And once the positions close, we will notify qualified candidates via email to self-schedule for an in-person interview on September 21st. Candidates are required to apply online and self-schedule for an interview prior to attending the event. If a candidate passes the interview, they could leave the event with a conditional offer of employment. Flyers are available on the side table, and we look forward to you joining our team. Any questions? Nope?
Yes, Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. Danielle, what is speed hiring? Is this just a thing that you all came up with, says speed hiring, you know?
Yes, it's a new event that we've never done before, and it's to just bring in those applicants faster to fill our vacancies.
Because I thought you were going to, you know, go through them in the morning and have them working in the afternoon.
That would be ideal, yes.
Uniform fitting and everything, I'll listen.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you.
Danielle, are these temporary positions, or are they full-time?
Full-time positions. We have about 16 available on our city website. They're all pretty much entry-level, so anyone that's interested, we definitely encourage to apply.
Okay, and they need to fill out an online application first?
That's correct.
And they can go to our library if they don't have an?
That's definitely, yes, they have to apply online, so our library is definitely available, and we have the city times that the library is open on the city website as well.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next announcement is from Palm Tran. Will Nikasha Wells and Anna Bilouska please come up to the podium?
Good evening, Mayor. That was an excellent pronunciation of her last name. My name is Nikasha Wells, and I'm the Senior Manager of Governmental Affairs for Palm Tran, and this is my colleague Anna Bilouska, the Senior Planner for Palm Tran. And we just wanted to say thank you for allowing us a brief moment this evening, just to come to let you know about some changes that are happening with our service. This is an effort by Palm Tran to reach out to most of the municipalities in Palm Beach County, where we have a robust amount of service, and Boynton Beach is definitely one of those cities, just to keep your residents abreast of upcoming changes to our service. So just to give you a little brief history of Palm Tran's Route Performance Maximization Project that we undertook, I don't know, do we have the clicker? Oh, it's right. Thank you. Last year in September, we underwent a complete overhaul of our service. Palm Tran has about nine million boardings a year, so just to put that in perspective, that's more than Bright Line, more than the Palm Beach International Airport, more than Uber, Lyft, and every other public transportation provider in Palm Beach County, including Tri-Rail. So we're a very important part of this community, as far as the amount of rides that we provide during the course of one year. And our Route Performance Maximization Project was just an effort to completely overhaul our routes. So what we're doing now is kind of like RPM 2.0, and we want to just continue to improve the service for the residents, particularly here in Boynton Beach. So Anna's going to talk about some of the changes that are coming up in September that specifically impact Boynton Beach. Before going into some of the service changes in Boynton Beach, I would like to give an overview of Palm Tran services in the city. Palm Tran currently has five routes operating within the boundary of Boynton Beach, including our highest ridership, Route 1, along the US 1 corridor. There are about 212 stops in the city with over 690,000 boardings, so that's a significant amount of boardings. As Nikasha mentioned earlier, last September, Palm Tran did a major overhaul of its fixed route network. This September, we are doing more exciting and positive changes, and we are doing improvements to routes that were previously not touched by the Route Performance Maximization Project last September. With the goal of improving ridership, we are improving weekday and weekend frequencies on some of our routes. We are extending route, and for, and for Boynton Beach, we are adding Sunday services to Route 73, which is the Boynton Beach Boulevard corridor. This route previously did not have Sunday services. This is a close-up of the route segment that will have Sunday services. It won't be the full route, it will be the Boynton Beach Tri-Rail to Boynton Beach Boulevard and Military Trail intersection. And this will be a 75-minute frequency, and this route will provide important connections to other Palm Tran routes. Some other exciting Palm Tran projects that we have coming up is a new bus shelter request for proposal. We will be installing and replacing a lot of Palm Tran shelters, and this is expected in fall of 2019. And just a fact, currently, there are 29 bus shelters in the city of Boynton Beach. We also have a semi-seat project, which we started, and we ordered our first 40 semi-seats already, and these are two-seat bench that attaches to a bus stop pole, and we are currently looking at locations in Boynton Beach for installation of semi-seats. And just a couple of other initiatives. One that was actually brought to us by your very own mayor, who also serves on our Palm Tran Service Board, and we thank him for his service, is an improved site plan development review process. Currently, Palm Tran has relationships with some municipalities, where we will actually review site plans along with your staff, to make certain that we have, we look for opportunities for, for bus furniture, so shelters, you know, bus benches, so we can actually be involved in the site plan review process, so that we don't have to go back after a project has already been approved, to try to retroactively, you know, put something on their site. So we're reaching out now to some of our partners in different municipalities to make certain that we're an active part of that site plan review process. Another project that we have going on is our FAIR technology interoperability, and that's just a long word, a long phrase, for making certain that when someone uses Palm Tran or Tri-Rail, that they can use the same FAIR card. Right now, if you want to take a trip from Palm Tran or from Palm Beach County down to Broward or Dade, you have to use three different FAIR medias in order to take those trips. And so we're working with our partners to the south to make certain that you can use one FAIR card or one type of media to go all the way throughout the region. So that's a huge project that we're working on with both Tri-Rail, Broward County, and Miami-Dade. And finally, one project that we're very excited about is our brand-new administrative facility, which is going to be in Delray, but we believe that it's going to help us to better serve residents in the southern part of the county. Right now, our main administrative facility is in the north part of the county, in West Palm Beach, and we... Palm Beach, and we think it kind of disconnects us a little bit from South County. So that's a $25 million, fully federally funded project that's going to be finalized in the fall of next year. So we're very excited about that, and we hope you'll join us for our ribbon-cutting. So with that, any questions?
I have one, and that is, I'm just saying, in District 2, we had a lot of complaints about, you know, people throwing trash and all that stuff around. Is there any way that your supervisors, when they ride through, can they like phone the city or phone somebody and say, you know, I think y'all need to do a pickup or something that it makes it look bad for you all, and it makes our city look bad? And I'm just saying, you know, we don't want to say that riders are doing it, or the people that's just sitting there, but we're trying to do, I want to do like a cleanup thing, saying, you know, what can we do to alleviate, you know, the litter that's being thrown around in our city, you know, but your drivers, if they see a place where it looks bad, they should be able to notify you or somebody and say, hey, I think y'all need to get that bus stop some attention, call the city?
Absolutely, and that's a great idea. This has kind of been an ongoing issue because our stops are kind of owned by different entities. Some are managed by the actual cities where they are housed. The only ones that we're responsible for are the ones that are in unincorporated Palm Beach County. But we are working with, and this is part of this effort in reaching out to municipal, local municipalities, so that we can have more of a symbiotic relationship as far as cleanup is concerned, because we definitely want the stops to remain clean and usable for all of our riders.
Thank you.
Commissioner Penzerga.
I just want to piggyback on what he brought up regarding garbage, because in many of those Palm Tran shelters, we have a plastic, a large plastic garbage bin that we put next to it. I've also noticed that in some cases, there are permanently welded-in garbage containers. And so what I'm noticing with our plastic containers is that when people put their garbage in there, and the wind comes, and it just blows and disperses all the garbage. In your new design, does it include these permanently welded-in containers? Could you just speak to the design in general about these new stations?
I am not sure if it includes that, but that is a good suggestion. We are currently working on the request for proposal, so that is something we can definitely explore.
Fantastic. I think it just would help with not littering, and it's accidental from the blowing of the wind and all of that, so thank you so much.
Signage is definitely a huge, it would help a tremendous amount if we knew about some of the stops where, you know, trash is a real issue. The other problem for us as an organization is that we have a very small staff that's actually responsible for trash pickup. So one of the things that our executive director is also looking into is actually contracting that service out, because we just, we don't have the manpower internally to be able to. We have 3,300 stops.
Over 2,900.
Right, so we have a tremendous amount of stops, and over a third of them have bus furniture at those stops, so it's just, it's more of an internal. We probably need to do a speed hiring event as well.
Well, you know, refined Danielle, she's right there.
Exactly. You should trademark it, for sure.
Thank you, too. And yes-
Thank you very much, Mayor.
I was able to ride the Palm Tran yesterday on the two-bus-
Oh, wow.
-from Gateway to Gulf Road, and it was surprising to me how everybody's so grateful, and the bus drivers are very courteous, and clean, and the Wi-Fi worked, and so, you know, I encourage everyone to take the public transportation whenever they can.
Thank you very much for that, Mayor.
I have a question. Nikasha, isn't there a program or an event that's done yearly where we encourage people to get on public transportation and try to like live on a dollar a day or something like that? Isn't there a program like that? Is that something that Palm Tran hosts, or is that something outside of you guys?
No, we actually do. We do get on the bus day in the spring of the year, but we actually have Mobility Week that's coming up at the end of September. Thank you so much for that plug. But we are encouraging individuals, we know that if you have cars, you know, transit may not be your first thought, but we're trying to make Palm Tran a lot more accessible for, you know, what we call choice riders, individuals who may not necessarily need transit but can utilize it. And we may have some FAIR-free days during Mobility Week as well, so we'll definitely keep you posted.
Thank you. If you could send out an email to let us know about that-
Absolutely, we'll send it to your city manager.
Eleanor is sitting back there, she's our social, our communications manager, she'll help kind of get that word out and really help people to participate in that, I think it's great.
We'll absolutely forward that information.
Thank you for being here, and thank you for bringing your daughter. I think she's learning a lot from-
Absolutely.
-the field trip today or something. She's on her YouTube channel, right?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you all.
All right. Next, we will proclaim the month of September as Hunger Action Month. Sari Avatsky, Executive Vice President of Feeding South Florida, will accept the proclamation.
City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas hunger and poverty are critical issues in South Florida, thus it is vital to raise awareness about the need for action to end the cycle of hunger and poverty by providing the necessary resources and working with the community towards collective solutions. And whereas the city of Boynton Beach is committed to working with Feeding South Florida, which provides immediate access to nutritious foods, leads hunger and poverty advocacy efforts, and transforms lives through innovative programming and education. And whereas more than 700,000 individuals in South Florida, one in five whom our children rely on food provided by Feeding South Florida and its network of partner agencies annually. And whereas Feeding America Food Banks across the country, including Feeding South Florida, will host several events through the month of September to bring awareness and attention to encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the month of September 2019 as Hunger Action Month.
Good evening, thank you, Commissioners, Vice Mayor, Mayor. On behalf of Feeding South Florida, we really appreciate your support and love that everyone has gone orange. We love the orange ribbons. While we certainly don't think that a color will end hunger, it certainly starts a conversation to raise awareness. We've been long joking that we're Boynton Beach's best-kept secret, and so I think that this month is definitely a step in the right direction towards changing that. We are really proud of the fact that our Palm Beach County headquarters is located here in the great city of Boynton Beach. We distribute 21 million pounds of food to Palm Beach County alone, which is about $34 million worth of resources. Just out of our Boynton Beach facility, we support seven partner agencies. We provide about 2 million meals just to this community alone. And so we're really grateful for the increased work that we are going to be doing together. We're looking forward to our distribution on September 21st with police and fire at the Hester Center during the speed event, so we'll see how that goes. It'll be a speed food distribution event, too. So we're really excited and grateful for all that you guys are doing, and we look forward to increasing your partnership. I do just want to take this opportunity to kind of clarify a misconception about who is food insecure in the community. People tend to think of the face of hunger as homeless, and that's actually completely the opposite. About 68% of those we serve are hard-working families, underemployed, single moms, older adults, kids, just trying to make ends meet. So we provide immediate access to nutritious food. That is the immediate solution, and certainly our goal is to break the cycle through job training, workforce development. We invested $3 million in our facility off of Park Ridge Boulevard. We are putting in another $2.2 million for a commercial kitchen, and hoping to expand the land behind our warehouse, four additional warehouse space, forklift training, job training. So thank you again for all your partnership, and we appreciate your support.
Commissioner Penzerga.
Thank you so much. I want to ask on behalf of the public, because I've had the oppo, many of us here have had the opportunity to tour your facility and know more about you. Are tours available to the public for anybody else that's interested in learning more about your organization and what you're doing?
Yes, that's a great question. We have 10 volunteer shifts per week, Tuesday through Saturday, 8:30 to 11:30, and 1:30 to 4:30, and we are absolutely always available to give people a tour.
I just want to make one final comment. As we were preparing for the hurricane, I called Sari, and there were two organizations that I think is worth mentioning, and there might be more, but there were two that I was aware of. When I asked, we could have a potential disaster here, do we have organizations that can help out and distribute food and water to the community? And Sari and Feeding South Florida, you were one of the very first people, I remembered, I was in Costco when you called, and I just want to thank you so much for being there for the community, because on our end, we do everything we can, but government just can't do everything, and so we need good community partners like you, and there was convoy of hopes, I want to thank you for that as well. And I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. Sorry, I want to personally say thank you for all that you do, because on Tuesday mornings, I'm out at your facility picking up the food to bring back over to St. John, where we have a distribution center, and people really don't understand. I'm just saying, the clients that we serve, they line up, we don't start serving them until like about 2:00 in the afternoon, but they're out there at 9:00 in the morning, and the expressions on their face and the thank yous that we receive and everything, although it's killing my bank, but it's worthwhile. And I, and the city manager's going to kill me, but I put a plug, I'm going to put a plug in for them, because she's going to get a group together that's going to come out and volunteer to help sort out for you all, okay?
Employees.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
Hard work, but I enjoy it, it's worthwhile. Keep up the good works.
Commissioner Romulus.
I just, you know, want to go a little bit deeper into what you mentioned, Sari, about the fact that, you know, it's not just homeless people or people who we think are obviously poor or destitute that face food insecurity, it's, you know, but a good percentage of America is one paycheck away from, you know, being in hardship or falling into hardship. And so the work that you do, I appreciate it, and, you know, really just grateful to the city manager and to staff for jumping on board this initiative for this month. And as you can tell, I'm really excited, I got decked out in orange today-
Love it.
-excited about this. And, you know, this is important to me, because, you know, fortunately, my father and my mother, they were hard-working people, and so we never had to, you know, go a day hungry, but again, we understand the fact that it could have been any day, and any hardship, any disability, any sickness could have caused, you know, either of my parents to potentially not be able to provide for me, and I know several other people who, you know, live in that reality each and every day, so it's important for us to, you know, keep these people in mind, and the work that we do to raise awareness for Hunger Action Month and to help take care of those residents who need it at their time of need and who are just trying to get back on their feet during hard times, it's important. So thank you for the work that you do, we look forward to partnering with you this month to really raise awareness and bring in a lot of success to this program, so thank you.
Thank you. Just in closing, I want to thank everyone for all their hard work during disaster preparation. As an organization that is the staging site for FEMA and man's, woman's persons, the EOC, down in Miami-Dade and Broward County, we certainly understand everything that goes into it, and you guys did an incredible job keeping the public informed, everyone safe. So thank you, we really appreciate your support.
Mayor, there's flyers in the back, or at the door for the distribution event. If you please take one and please spread the word for the community, it'll take place on Saturday, September 21st, at 9:00 AM in the morning, and that's right off of the, at the Hester Center. So fresh food, some perishables, fresh fruits and vegetables, I think, right? And we're going to have city volunteers help distribute the food, so we look forward to you coming, too.
Plus, for those in the audience, we have orange ribbons in the front, if someone would like some, to help spread awareness for Hunger Action Month.
And we're collecting food, we're doing a food drive amongst our employees in the organization for the month of September, and employees that can dress down on Fridays, they pay $5 to do so, and we donate that money each month to different charities, and we will be donating September's proceeds to Feeding South Florida.
All right, wonderful. Our next proclamation is for Constitutional Day and Citizenship Day. City of Boynton Beach proclamation, whereas September 17th, 2019, marks the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. Whereas the President and the Congress of the United States have designated September 17th as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day, and the week of September 17th to the 23rd as Constitution Week. And whereas it is important that all citizens fully understand the provisions, principles, and meaning of the Constitution so they can support, preserve, and defend it. And whereas the people of the city of Boynton Beach do enjoy the blessings of liberty, the guarantees of the Bill of Rights, equal protections of the law under the Constitution, and the freedom derived from it. Now therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 17th day of September 2019 as Constitution Day and Citizenship Day. In addition, the week of September 17th to the 23rd, 2019, as Constitution Week, in the city of Boynton Beach, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties.
Marjorie Farrar is here, Mayor, to accept the proclamation.
Thank you.
My name is Marjorie Farrar, I am representing tonight the Daughters of the American Revolution. This is Karen Knopf, the Regent of the Henry Morrison Flagler Chapter, and we are here to explain to you a little bit the highlights of what we're doing with Constitution Week. We've partnered with the school board, because we realize that in seven years, in 2026, America will be 250 years old. There is a committee that's been formed out of Washington, out of Congress, that's America, USA 250, and there's a huge committee already planning to do that. So our idea was, first of all, realizing that the children, the students that are in the fifth grade now will be the graduating class of 2027, that's seven years from now. And so we are working with the school board to eventually not just work with the fifth graders to make them the smartest children about the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence, but their goal is K through 12, 190,000 students by the year 2026. This first year, we are in 33 schools, have accepted our, will be accepting our toolkits and the virtual lesson plans and everything, fifth grade, seventh grade, and 12th grade. You have two schools, 11 classrooms in Boynton Beach that have signed up for that. We brought you, we've distributed the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence poster to all of the public libraries, and all of the municipal libraries, your librarian unfortunately said she didn't have room, so I've brought the posters for you, hopefully you can put them up and do some kind of a presentation for your citizens. I also have for you the Constitution book, I don't know when the last time was all of you read the Constitution, but it's time to do it again, and a little bookmark for us. And then I also have a proclamation from the governor to read you and to present to Ron DeSantis, Governor, Constitution Week in Florida. Whereas our founding fathers signed the Constitution of the United States on September 17, 1787, establishing a framework for the foundation of our nation's prosperity and liberties. And whereas, this historic document is of central importance to our nation and represents the timeless and enduring truths that inform the basic institutions of the American Republic. And whereas, within the Constitution, we learn of the separation of powers, checks and balances, role of courts, limited and enumerated powers of Congress, and the importance of self-government and individual liberties. And whereas, as Americans and Floridians, we should always honor our military, who have shown tremendous courage in defense of the Constitution and our priceless freedoms. And whereas, in 1956, Constitution Week was annually commemorated by President Dwight D. Eisenhower from September 17 through September 23. And whereas, 36 USC 108, as amended, requests the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week. And whereas, Constitution Week in Florida provides an opportunity for all Floridians to learn about the Constitution of the United States and reflect on the unique principles of our great nation. Now therefore, I, Ron DeSantis, Governor of the state of Florida, do hereby extend my support to all observing September 17 through 23, 2019, as Constitution Week in Florida. my support to all observing September 17 through 23, 2019, as Constitution Week in Florida. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have a question. What are those ribbons and, you know, your decorations for?
Into the microphone, please.
Go back to the microphone.
Into the microphone.
They're all different pins. There are, there's a pin for the state of my patriot, which was Massachusetts. There's a pin for Florida, which I'm a daughter of the state of Florida chapters. My patriot is Andrew Crookshank. He came from Ireland. He was a private. Then my chapter is Henry Morrison Flagler. This pin also designates that on my father's side of the family, we go back to the Mayflower. So one of the 26 men in the Mayflower. My mother's side fought in the American Revolution. The rest of these are officer pins and chapter pins and recognition, sort of like the Scouts unit, get the badges. This is not very many. I'm a new member. I've only been a member for five years. There are ladies that have hundreds of these, and they joined when they were 10, or 11, or 12 years old. And any, any person, and this is daughters of the American Revolution, there are sons of the American Revolution and children. If anyone can trace their family with ancestry.com or through a family Bible, regardless of race, religion, or anything, if they had anything to do with the American Revolution, they didn't have to be a soldier. They could have knitted socks. They could have given money. They could have done anything to support the revolution. You are eligible to be a member. And there are hundreds of thousands of members in the United States. We have, I think, 15 overseas chapters who are patriots that live around the world. The Bahamas chapter pretty much, all 39 members of that chapter survived and their families survived. So we will be collecting whatever we can do to help them, like we do for all of it. It's a volunteer organization, and you can be a member all your life. And we volunteer. Three main things that we do, historic preservation, education, and patriotism.
Thank you. You're heavily decorated. I like that.
I'm sorry. Yeah, you're like, then there are all sorts of other pins. These are the official ones. There are a lot of other ones. Thank you very much.
If I may just make a comment. One of my favorite organizations is called Honor Flight.
Yes.
And every time I go to the airport, there's always a large contingent of your
You see us there.
Yeah. So I just want to thank you for that.
Thank you.
Addition to being here today. So I really appreciate that.
Thank you. We also spend a lot of time at the National Cemetery. Reese, at the, flags at Memorial Day and wreaths at Christmas on every single tombstone. And we, there are just a lot of things. We feed homeless children in the schools. And we provided patriotic baseball cards of all the, for the school system for these kids. And these are all the patriots that are not your normal patriots. They're the black and brown ones you never hear of. It's not George Washington in that group. There are a lot of other people that we're trying to educate everyone about the variety of people that fought in the American Revolution.
You just told your age when you said tombstones because I'm just on a funeral director. We call them grave markers. I'm just saying, you know.
Grave markers, tombstones. We clean them. We go to the cemeteries and clean them.
Commissioner Romulus, did you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to correct it for the record. Ms. Taylor, our librarian, probably told you we don't have space simply because of our temporary housing right now for the library. I didn't want to make it seem like it's, we didn't, we didn't want to post it up. So as, I'm sure as our new library gets finished and built, we can.
I spoke to Allison. She said, I just don't have room. But we have posters for her for next year. So, you know, we're there. We're there for you. And between the county and the municipal libraries, we have just distributed to 30 of them. So you should see some beautiful displays in your libraries, I hope, and we're asking them to take pictures. So, and we, by the way, this, this initiative with Palm Beach County Schools, we understand it's never been tried before. And it, we would have to pick a big county, but there's a lot of kids. But we are giving a presentation at our conference about the success of Palm Beach County schools working with DAR to educate the children, and that's the goal.
Well, we hope to show it off once our new library is built.
Yes, no problem. Thank you.
Next, we have announcements of the following September 2019 meetings. A special commission meeting on Tuesday, September 10th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. at Central Park Clubhouse to adopt final fire assessment for fiscal year 2019-20. This meeting will be held immediately before the CRA meeting. And we have a regular commission meeting on Tuesday, September 17, 2019, at 6:30 p.m. at Central Park Clubhouse. I've been asked by the city manager to invite Matt Petty, Deputy Chief of the Fire Department, to give a brief presentation.
Matt Petty, Emergency Manager, City of Boynton Beach. It will be brief.
He wants to go home with his.
My kids want to go home. No, I'm fine. Greetings, Mayor Grant, Commissioner Penzerga, Commissioner Romulus, Commissioner McCray, Vice Mayor Katz. I want to begin by stating that our thoughts and prayers are with the Bahamas as they are dealing with an unimaginable devastation that will require all the assistance available to them in the coming days, months, and even years. Tuesday, August 27th, we began closely monitoring what is now Hurricane Dorian. Thursday, there was a significant likelihood that South Florida would be directly impacted by the hurricane. City Manager Lori Laveri was briefed of the situation, and under her leadership, all city departments began initial preparations for the storm. By Friday afternoon, that's 24 hours later, by Friday afternoon, all departments completed their predetermined hurricane preparedness activities. Saturday, the city of Boynton Beach Emergency Operations Center, commonly referred to as the EOC, transitioned to a Level 2 activation, and essential personnel began reporting in order to prepare for a full-scale activation. Sunday, a local state of emergency was declared, and the EOC transitioned to a Level 1 activation, the highest possible level of activation. Monday, all essential personnel in place, including hundreds of sworn and uniformed personnel staged throughout the city, with full-scale EOC operations well underway. City leadership spent countless hours in briefs, meetings, weather updates, and coordinating activities during this time. The Fire Department was fully mobilized, additional units placed into service, and prepared to address what may be required. There was an unprecedented police presence throughout the city that provided a level of comfort and security to the community, for which Chief Gregory and his team should be commended. This was a close call. At one point in time, Boynton Beach was the center of national weather-related news. The majority of the spaghetti models had Palm Beach County receiving a direct hit by Hurricane Dorian. A few of these models had the eye of the storm making landfall at the Boynton inlet. Ultimately, the storm stayed east and then traveled north, but many other communities were not as fortunate. One of the most essential components in emergency management is the team. Under the direct leadership and guidance of City Manager Lori Laveri, I cannot think of a better team than all the individuals that worked so hard over the past week in preparation for the hurricane. I am standing up here on behalf of that large team, so large that we would not be able to fit into this room. Without a great team, you cannot have hope. Without hope, you cannot have success. And I now have a lot of hope for future emergency management situations. They might get mad at me, but at this time, I would like all the individuals that serve in the EOC to stand up and be recognized. In closing, I would like to thank the city commission for your ongoing support, and I look forward to our future endeavors. Any questions? Comments?
Well done.
Good job.
May I just add, I have to. And I invited Matt up here today and wanted him to come share with you the work that goes into getting us ready. You can never be too prepared. We were, we were very lucky. But I have to say, Matt's, you know, it's, I may be the city manager, but I'm not in charge in the EOC. He is. And we all listen to him. And you need someone who knows what they're doing, knows how to deploy people, knows how to talk resources, and, and keep us on the right path, no pun intended, of keeping the city safe. And he did outstanding job. I felt very confident and very safe. And, and then our marketing team did an outstanding job getting the word out to our community, and we had a lot of people that really appreciated that. And I just want to say, Matt Petty, you did a fantastic job as our emergency manager. Not that I want any more storms in the future, but if we do, I feel we, we do have an outstanding team as well. But you, you pulled us all together, and I want to say thank you.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Romulus?
I, again, Matt, will, will thank you. Like I said, you know, I'll reiterate it. After the Word of Trin, I was looking forward to each and every email that came by that had your name in the send folder. It really just was reassuring every time I saw those emails from you to just keep up to date with you.
Yes.
So thank you. You reassured staff, you reassured the leaders of this community and the public. I would say on behalf of them, thanks you as well. So thank you very much.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And this isn't in my notes, but I do feel that we, that you all should be proud as the city and commissioners and mayor and vice mayor, is that we interacted with Palm Beach County, who we are under. We interacted at a level that no other city in the ditch, in the city and the county did. It is correct. People were looking to us for direction on how we were doing it. And I feel that we, we represented the city of Boynton Beach, not just Boynton Beach, but on a county-wide level, to a high standard that we can hopefully exceed again. Yes.
Take those kids home. Take them home. Go, go.
Next is public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record.
David Katz, 67 Midwood Lane, Arfaire City. It's my understanding that last year, the, there was a budget item to fund a board dinner for this year. And then that board dinner's been canceled, and those monies have been reallocated for the 2020 celebration. And I don't think that's right. I think that's like the guy in the White House taking the disaster relief money and using it for the wall that Mexico was supposed to pay for. There's hundreds of volunteers, and the 2020 celebration has nothing to do with the amount of time the city's board members put in. And I'm hoping that this commission would direct the city manager and staff to do what they did last year, which was absolutely fantastic. The mayor was there, Commissioner McCray, Commissioner Romulus, they came together. You missed it, I'm sorry. It was a great time, and you would have been at the one this year. So I'm hoping that they reschedule it and, and make it happen because the cost isn't all that much. And the board members, who all volunteer, really appreciate it when it happens. The other thing I'd like to talk about is on Congress Avenue, and I spoke to Colin about this, there's a, a part of the pavement, turn signal that goes into the north side of where the, the Al House is. You might be familiar with it. Congress Avenue is the main thoroughfare in the city. And Colin, through my urging, called the county, and they've said that this particular piece of what I would call not an art and public place, is still structurally sound, but it is downright ugly. And I'd appreciate the commission and staff to pressure them further to get it repaired, and not in a patchwork way. It's ugly. If this was Boca or Delray or the island in Palm Beach, it wouldn't be like this. It is, I mean, they just repaved that road, and it's just horrible looking. And I'd appreciate your, your help in getting the board dinner back for this year and that piece of roadway fixed. Thank you.
Yes. Do you have some paper? Colin will come get it. Colin?
My name is Lake Calra. I live at 3842 South Lake Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida. I've been living here in the same location for about 40 years. And I like this city. My children were born and brought up in this city, and they have become doctors. About five years ago, the county had a lot, five acres lot, just south of my lot, which is about 23 acres on Lake Ida and Canal and highway on the other side. Being a surplus, they asked for bids, and I was a maximum bidder. But your ex-commissioner, Mike Fritzpatrick, then wanted me to buy, so he approached all the seven BCC commissioners of staff to sell it to the city of Boynton Beach. The city realized that this has no land access, and it'll be a burden to them, and the city did correctly, that they will not buy. Now, the same commissioner went to Delray City and sold, told, sold, told them that to buy that lot so that I can't buy, and that way, nobody can use that lot. The Delray City bought it. All the five commissioners of Delray, along with the city manager, went to BCC and convinced them to sell it to Delray, and BCC sold it to Delray. Now, this has no land access, so county put a restriction on the, new students complained that they have to maintain that area. They, the Delray City and their code enforcement agreed to do the cleanup with, with one year's time, and they failed. So they asked the county to take it back, and the county refused. And they said, why? They said, I don't want to pay penalty. Now, ultimately, what has happened, since they can't maintain the lot, they are doing a slick way of annexing that property off Boynton to Delray so that the poor county gets back off from them in maintaining the code, code requirements. So I request you to look into it because the city of Boynton is losing now $20,000, later $250,000 every year on the taxes. And this land will be, cannot be used by anyone because of no land access, and they cannot maintain it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lake. And so I guess my question to Jim is, is that, do we have a claim because it is adjacent to Boynton Beach to incorporate that to us, or is that something that Delray can only do?
It's not an issue of Delray only being able to do it. We're looking into the options for, that are available to Boynton Beach. So we'll, we'll make a report to the commission on that.
Whether we should annex it or?
Well, what all the options are.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Ray Whitley, 223 Northeast 12th Avenue, and I wrote a couple of things that I wanted to share to the homelessness coalition. It's ironic, I'm glad that I came tonight because we were going to meet with this, with Palm Beach County about that homelessness and how do we talk about it. I'm really, really glad that there is somebody in this city that we could get with. So we're going to be reaching out to talk to them about how do we bring some, some more light to whatever it is and whatever we could do to help. We want to be able to help that as well. Second thing, I too got the emails over the hurricane, and it was amazing. Whoever did it did an awesome job. I felt safe. I felt really, really safe. Not only did we copy paste, but we forwarded that out to our list, put it on our social media, and people really felt good about that. So thank you. Shout, shout out to Matt Petty and Lori for their leadership. It was really nice. And because I'm connected to Palm Beach County, I get an opportunity to brag to everybody else in the other cities. And he was right. People were looking to us. And I just got an opportunity to really show off what Boynton does. And thank you very much. We did represent Palm Beach County well. We represent Palm Beach County well. So the reason- So, the reason for my speaking tonight is the coalitions in Palm Beach County, we've been partnering with the government to have a relief effort. Everybody's having one, and it'd be a great look for us to come together in solidarity to do one. We all have our own different places that things would be going to, and that's fine, you know. But we just have to, in a time like this, it's important that we come together to show that Boynton Beach, which is the closest, I just heard tonight, the closest place to Bahamas, to do something. So, what it would look like for this city, we'll just get together and we could work it out. We don't have any specific plan. We just know that we want to work together with the city, police department. We could take the templates from other cities who've been using the fire department and the police department as our drop-off zones, just to be inclusive. We don't want to limit it to one certain area of the community. We just want to make sure that everyone who wants to give has an opportunity to give. So, please consider it, and we want to start working ASAP. I'm competing with my Palm Beach brothers who called and invited me to fly over to Bahamas, but those planes are small. I'm kind of nervous about the small planes. So, thank you very much for the consideration, and I'll follow up with questions or whatever.
Commissioner Penner, you have a question? Colin McCray?
Mr. Whitley, could you just tell the public how one would get in contact with you and participate in this effort?
Okay. So, my cell number is 561-523-2286. But what it would look like from a Boynton Beach point of view, we haven't worked out yet. So, we would love to be able to sit with city staff and work out what it looks like, who are the contact persons. I don't mind folk contacting me because we're going to do it. But we just want to do it as a community, right? So, after we have a conversation with our city staff, I may be that contact person, but I may not be.
Okay. Commissioner McCray, you have a question?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I appreciate your statement that you made tonight, but I do want to let you know for the record, that is, that the fire department here in this city, they're already getting things already to send over to the Bahamas. And I'm just saying, I know what you're saying, that you want us to come together as a city. We are already together, sir. But what it is, we have a lot of things that we need to work out so that we don't stop bombarding what is already being done. Like you said, we need to come to the table right now. We're not at the table. Once we get to the table, we could sit down and find out what we need to do, and that's what we need to start. But thank you for, you know, putting the table out there. We will come to the table, but not right now.
So, Ray, I spoke with the director of Feeding South Florida, and the issue is that the population of the Bahamas is around $400,000, 400,000 people. They're going to be bombarded with supplies throughout the country. And then you have what's going on with South Carolina and North Carolina. The main concern that we have with Boynton Beach is that we want to have that continual effort to help them out. And so, we need to find the partners in the Bahamas to have that continued effort. So, the rush to do something as soon as possible, I was informed today that they haven't even opened the porch yet for ships. You know, the amount of time that it takes from a vessel to come from Palm Beach to the Bahamas, I believe it's like three hours. It's little to nothing. It's the coordination that we need is the key part because we can't send them supplies and then them be waiting at the docks like we've had in past hurricanes over Maria where there's just water bottles sitting at tarmacs. And so, we are really appreciative that the coalition is going to be partnering with the city, and we are going to have to find those partners in the Bahamas to partner with us as well.
We've done that. We've identified different partners there, and we do understand that everybody's bombarded in Bahamas. So, one of the things that we want to do is talk about different phases. What do we do in phases? Because this is a sustained effort, and it won't just go away when something else happens or when the media tide changes, you know. So, that's why we really want to have the conversation with government and with other partners so we could create a sustainable thing that would happen over the next year.
All right. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
So, I would simply just say overall, I do believe that we, as a commission, we're in agreement that we would be willing to be a part of efforts. We just want to make sure we go about it the right way. So, city manager can get in touch with the coalition. And I know that there is always conversation happening between the city manager and the coalition anyway, so that can continue, and we can really make sure we rally our efforts and send it and direct it the right way. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Garielle Fishman of 3504 Diane Drive in Boynton Beach. I'm a residents' association president. I come here again to voice my grave concerns about the nearly five acres of land to the north of Lake Ida Park in Delray Beach. As some of you can recall, this land was bid on by Boynton Beach and by Lack Calra, who has the only land access to this land. Palm Beach County awarded the land to Boynton Beach, the lowest bidder in the auction. When Palm Beach County changed the stipulation for Boynton Beach to have land access not in 10 years, but in five years, Boynton Beach decided that within five years, they could not get land access. Delray Beach, not being in the auction, illegally acquired the land going against legal auction rules. Now, it's been nearly five years, and Delray Beach does not, I repeat, does not have that critical stipulation. Boynton Beach, really, I feel, was really hurt by this because Boynton Beach, if anyone, well, first off, Lack Calra should own the land. He has the only land access. But then again, Boynton Beach was in the auction. They should have gotten the land. So, why Palm Beach County decided to lift all restrictions for Delray is absurd. Delray Beach has not adequately maintained this five-acre parcel and has several cold violations standing on their books for nearly three years. With no means of proper maintenance, this land sits as a harmful jungle. Iguanas, rabid raccoons, possums, poisonous snakes, and alligators are escaping into our neighborhoods. Invasive legal, illegal trees and bushes are not being destroyed and are spreading too. Florida does have rules for Australian pines and like to be destroyed, and they're just ignoring that. Delray Beach wants to keep the land and get it annexed to themselves. This is something recent that they're trying to do, and I think there's a date of September 16th, which they're toying with. I really don't want and don't think that this land should be annexed, nor do I feel that Delray should be owning the land. The land really should be forfeited. And as Mr. Calra had said, about a year ago, they were told by Delray that they could give back the land. So, Delray Beach came to them and said, we want to give back the land. We can't maintain it. And I really think that that should be explored now. I do feel that Delray Beach needs to give back the land. I really and truly need your help with this. My neighborhood is suffering greatly, and I appreciate living in Boynton Beach. I've been here for 27 years, and thank you for all you do. And I saw a number of you on television regarding the storm, and we're all blessed that we missed it this time. Thank you, and God bless everyone.
Thank you.
Sharon Evans, 32 Country Lake Circle.
Move the microphone a little bit lower.
I'm so cold. It's hard to move in here. Thank you for turning the air down. So, I am come representing Little League Park. Sharon Evans, 32, Country Lake Circle, Little League Park. My children play there, as well do other 600 other families. First, I'd like to say thank you for our new dugouts that are well underway, and the fact that our new tarps and our new safety netting did get pulled back by the emergency crews. We appreciate protecting our new stuff that we did get from the FEMA money. It is disappointing to see that in the new budget for this year, that we do not have any funds allocated to Little League Park. In the previous, looking at the previous fiscal budgets, we were allocated money for this coming year. I understand money has to be shifted around for certain needs in different parks. However, I will voice to you that this is likely the most utilized park within the city as far as constancy of people there. You can drive by any night of the week. You will see the lights on and the kids playing. Also, youth sports are on a decline. This has statistically been proven. However, baseball is alive and well. As people take their children out of football, they are putting them into baseball for safety concerns. The city of Boynton Beach has a very prideful Little League history. It is a historic park in our city. It is not ADA compliant. We have families who cannot bring their children in wheelchairs, nor can the grandparents come to watch the games. So, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sharon. Is there anyone else for public audience? Seeing none, moving on to administrative. Appoint eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions on city advisory boards. I believe we have one open, one regular opening for the education youth advisory board. And then I had a question regarding Kevin Duderval application. It says that he is a student at FAU. Does that qualify him as one of the students that could be on this board?
It said that he's a student?
In his application, he is a student. He's pursuing a bachelor of science in finance. And so, I don't know if our, you know, resolution for education youth advisory boards requires the students to be under the age of 18 or not.
We never had that before.
We're looking at the code of ordinances now.
Can't hear you.
We're researching the code of ordinances now.
All right.
I don't think we've ever had an actual age restriction in there.
Never had an age restriction.
So, that's kind of why it says, you know, part of it, the applicant says eligible for a regular appointment only, but he put that he is currently a student.
We're looking at it. If you want to go on, do you have any other appointments?
So, Commissioner McCray has a regular appointment.
Chavette Gatson.
Second.
All right. All those in favor state so by saying aye. All those opposed, sing none. She's appointed as the regular member, and I'd like to nominate Kevin Duderval if he's allowed or not restricted by our ordinance.
Second.
Any further discussion? Sing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. And those are the only board. We still have openings on the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the Historic Resources Preservation Board, the Library Board, and the Senior Advisory Board. Next, for administrative authorized members of the city commission to attend Palm Beach County Days in Tallahassee from January 14th to 16th, 2020. Lori?
We have funding in the budget for the elected officials to travel up to Tallahassee. It's January 14, 15, 16. And we just, you know, as required by your travel resolution, you discuss amongst yourselves who would like to go. And I think we fund for four of, maybe four commissioners to go. So, let me know, and we'll make arrangements. Registration is opening very soon, and we'll start looking at flights. And I know, Mayor, you've discussed possibly driving. So, let me know if...
Since it's on the floor now, I'm just saying, you know, we don't have to, you know, worry about discussing it. I'm just saying, who want to go? I'm just saying, you know, let's do it now and get it over with.
So, for me, I'd like to go. And also, I was able to attend this past year's the Florida League of Cities Legislative Days as well. And so, you know, I would request the travel expenditure of $1,000. And I know that you can, if you stay at an Airbnb, you drive and don't use all the meal money, you can move, make that traveling expenses go a lot further. And so, I would request for the travel expenditure of $1,000 per person.
Per person. Who else want to go?
I would like to attend as well.
I'll go, but I don't think I want to fly. I'd probably just drive.
I plan to go, but I'm not driving to Tallahassee.
I plan to do neither.
I'll have to confirm with the city manager whether I can fly or drive at a later time.
Yeah. Well, I'll go ahead and just get the registration sent as soon as we can, and I'll get with each of you individually on transportation. And we want to get the hotel booked.
Well, that's the other thing.
We already did. We held rooms, but not at the conference rate, just in case. So, I'm going to change that reservation to the conference rate for aloft.
So, you have four.
Okay. Mayor, you mentioned the League of City Policy Committee. Was that something else that you mentioned?
Yeah, the League of Cities also has a legislative day, I believe, probably at the end of the month. They haven't announced it yet.
It's soon thereafter.
It's sometime thereafter. And I felt it was actually very informative because you got to meet with the other city leaders throughout the state and talk to their representatives. You know, we have a good relationship with Palm Beach County, and it kind of gets a little crowded on Palm Beach County Day.
Right. And so, and that's, you said that's the week after?
I don't know when it is. But that's why I said, you know, a travel expenditure of $1,000 per person to go to Tallahassee, and if there's any money left over from that, to use that funds to go to another time so that...
Got it.
All right. Let's kill one bird at one time. We trying to shoot everybody now, okay?
I know. So, do you need a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second by Vice Mayor Katz.
Thank you. And so, the motion was to allow the four commissioners to go to Tallahassee for Palm Beach County Days. All those in favor state so by saying aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to consent agenda, I'd like to pull item A. Is there anyone else who would like to pull an item?
I, one second, just have to figure out which one. Never mind, it's under the hundreds. I'll pull that one later. Or do we pull it now? Which one do you want?
We'll pull it later. So, proposed resolution number 19-089, approved transmitter of the current city of Boynton Beach State Housing Initiative Partnership Program annual report and corrected fiscal year 1516 annual report, including authorizing the mayor to sign the corresponding local housing certifications. You know, I got an email, I believe, this past week saying that, you know, we weren't in compliance. Is everything that the city needs to do as part of this resolution?
Yes. Lishay Brooks, Community Improvement Specialist, the certifications on the agenda that you're approving tonight will clarify the letter that you receive. We'll answer that letter and include you in the correspondence.
Okay. That was my question.
Explain further. What are we clarifying in the letter?
The letter, we, our annual report was pulled from 1516. So, we had to make some corrections on that report. Once you make correction to the report, you have to resubmit it to be approved. So, we have to bring it here to get it approved. Once it's approved, resubmit it back to the state with the certification. So, that's what they're waiting for, the certification.
No problem. Thank you for clarification.
All right. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve?
Some will.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion for the...
Motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda.
Second, that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed. Moving on to consent bids and purchases over $100,000. Commissioner?
Mayor, before I pull or not pull, Colin, can I confirm there is a presentation fantastic? I'd like to pull item A regarding Meadows Park and Boynton Lakes Park.
Okay. And Commissioner Romulus, did you have an item that you wish to pull?
See.
Same item A. Proposed resolution number 19-090, approved purchase orders to Comp Inc. utilizing the U.S. Committee's contract for Meadows Park Fitness Zone installation in the amount of $23,500, and for Boynton Lakes Park Playground installation in the amount of $90,000. For a total estimated expenditure of $113,500 and authorize the city manager to sign a piggyback contract with Comp Inc., U.S. Committee's contract satisfies the city's procurement requirements.
Good evening. Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. Do have a brief presentation just to go over the amenities of the park and give you some graphical pictures of what we're doing at the two parks. So, we are-
Before you go any further, what's wrong with this air conditioner? Because we are about to freeze.
It's starting to warm up and it's trying to adjust now. It's just warming up.
It's adjusting.
You got any overcoats in here then?
No.
Is the thermostat in the budget?
Extra coats.
Extra coats.
We blew the budget when we got new microphones. That's what happened, Doug.
It's coming back. It's resetting.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, as a part of the CIP this year, we have a replacement of the Boynton Lakes Playground. In that playground is included, is the existing swing sets that are there are going to remain. We're adding two spinner bowls, a spica, elf play apparatus, and synthetic play surface. Next slide. This is a layout of the park. You can see over to the right, you have the swing sets. In the middle is that new play apparatus. And the other three items are the spinners and the spica. Next slide. And then, this is a picture of the playground equipment that's going in. And we're doing all new synthetic play surface that encompasses this equipment and the actual swing sets that are remaining. So, this is the first part of that. And then, at Meadows Park, we're actually doing a new-
Stop, stop before you go any further. Go back to that picture and tell me, how long do those play surfaces last? Because they got one down in District 3, J.C. Park that needs some work on it. How long do those things last?
Depending on the environment, they're going to last 10 to 15 years. The one at J.C. Park is scheduled to be replaced this fiscal year. We're working on getting that done as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Andrew?
Yes.
That typo was made by the company, not us.
What?
Boynton Lakes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Sure, we know how to spell our own name.
Yes, that was done by Compan. Sorry. Meadows Park, we had some existing fitness trail equipment. We've opted to go to a fitness zone instead of the trail. So, as part of that, there's a combination pull-up bar, a bench seat, and a climber, a parallel bar, a push-up bar, and then three-step aerobic steps. You get next slide. So, this is a layout of that new fitness zone that shows the different apparatuses with the synthetic plate, or synthetic turf around it. And this is the picture from Compan that shows the apparatuses that'll be in that park. And once we get approval, we're hoping that we can have these stalled within the next 30 to 60 days.
Is this same company that we worked with for the oceanfront park?
Yes, correct. And they actually, in that park, they gave us a grant. And we actually had a great, a lot of positive feedback from that playground and fitness equipment there as well.
Yes, I remember. Thank you.
Andrew, could you just make sure to send this information to me?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Any motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. May I have a remainder of the-
She pulled C, didn't she?
Did you pull C?
I sure did.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item C, approve an increase to the estimated expenditure with MacMillan Oil Company of Hialeah from $1 million to $1.2 million per the City of Delray agreement due to the fluctuating prices for the period of the contract, which expires on June 6, 2020.
I just want staff to elaborate and explain this to the public. Simply, when we're spending this amount of money, it's not, I don't feel comfortable just letting it pass under consent. So, I just want to have an open dialogue on it before we vote.
Yes. Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. In the beginning of the year, each fiscal year, we do our best to estimate what the gas prices will be for, over the year. This year, we're hoping, and typically over the last few years, we've expended a million, under $1 million. This year, we actually had a little, or we're projecting a little bit of an overrun based on the fluctuations that we received in gas prices in the beginning of the fiscal year in October. And in March, April, and May, we had some variations in the gas prices. So, with that, we want, we need to make sure that we increase the allocation so that we can cover the remaining bills that we'll get for the remainder of the fiscal year. So, we typically have been expending around $900,000, a little under $1 million every year. And this year, with some of the price increases, we're going to expend $1.2 million. As well as, one of the other things that we weren't accounting for in our allocation was, the same company is used by utilities and the, another department is escaping me, golf course. Yes, sorry. So, we made sure that we corrected that to make sure we're including them in our allocation. Because if they used our allocation up, then we would be short and unable to pay them. So, and just to give a shout out as a part of the hurricane preparedness, MacMillan, we are preference over other municipalities that are out there. So, we get first rights to fuel during emergency. And that happened during our extra, our dry run. We topped off all our tanks. All that happened on Friday. So, we were fully fueled. All our cars were fully fueled. And the city was, had enough gas to last us for days.
Perfect. Good to know. Thank you. Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. May I have a remainder for the rest of the consent agenda?
Move. Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to public hearing. Jim?
Ordinance 19027, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending land development regulations, Chapter 4, site development standards by creating a new Section 12 entitled Sustainable Development Standards, providing for purpose and intent, applicability, exemption, sustainable development options, and maintenance, providing for conflict severability, codification, and effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
All right. Any discussion from the audience? Any discussion from the board? Seeing none on both accounts. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Yes.
Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz? Vote is 5-0.
Moving on to the city manager's report, a presentation of the proposed activation of the new city hall innovation space.
Well, John's coming up. And I just wanted to point out that the previous agenda item on the appointment is in order. Student is not defined. And the student can be a resident or non-resident of the city. The motion was in order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. John Durgan, Economic Development Specialist, Department of Economic Development and Strategy. As Town Square is being built, staff thought it'd be a good time to discuss the proposed space on the first floor of our new city hall. Right now, we're calling it our innovation space. But we, staff wanted to bring some different options to the commission as well as the public that the space can be utilized for. So, I'm going to run through a couple of different options for you, give some real-life examples of those options, and as well as give staff some recommendation on what we believe will be the best utilization for the space. As a brief overview of the space, it's just over 2,000 square feet. It'll be on the first floor of our new city hall. It'll have access to meeting rooms. And those meeting rooms will have accordion doors that can expand into a large meeting room. We can hold events in there. And it can be accessed through a separate exit. So, there's a separate exit and entrance to the, to the space. So, you can access it after hours, after business hours. And before we go into the different options, staff had to ask ourselves a couple of questions on what we envision for the space, what's the best purpose for the space, what the space going to look like, and what sort of amenities, technology, and equipment is going to be utilized in the space. So, the first option we wanted to present is a business incubator space. Business incubators specialize in helping startup and early-stage businesses by providing resources such as office space, marketing, legal counsel, access to financing such as venture capital, mentorship, any sort of expertise in the business development field. Incubators help. And their sole purpose is to incubate those businesses during those critical and most important early stages, early stages in that business's lifecycle. A business incubator can be a nonprofit organization. It can be a public institution such as universities. It can also be a for-profit company or a combination of both, which we'll see on the next slide. And once the incubation is completed, the business graduates from the incubator and expands and grows. So, a great example of a business incubator that we saw that we really loved was the UCF Business Incubator Program. They help early-stage businesses grow. And their metric on how they measure when a business graduates from the incubator is when they get to the point where they have to hire additional employees to keep their operations going. That's when they graduate from the incubator here. And it's a selective process. You have to apply to get in. So, not any business can just come in and be a member. They have to show their scalability and sustainability of the business. Next slide. What's really great about UCF's program is it's funded through a community partnership. It's funded through the university as well as what they call the Florida High Tech Corridor Council, Volusia, Orange, Osceola, and Seminole Counties, as well as cities such as Kissimmee, Orlando, Apopka, and Winter Springs. All of those cities and counties help fund the program because there are eight different incubator locations. And each one of those counties and cities has a location within their jurisdiction. So, they help fund it. The incubator's been open since 1999. So, it's been open for over 20 years now. And they have a total economic output of $1.8 billion over those 20 years. So, they've been very successful. And that was a great example of what we're looking for as a business incubator. The next option we do have is a coworking space, which is a shared office environment where entrepreneurs can come and exchange knowledge and ideas. They can utilize your office equipment, whether that's printers, scanners, fax machines, conference rooms, a dedicated desk. They can utilize high-speed internet. The point of, one of the biggest sells for a coworking space is that they provide below-market value office space. As we saw from our business survey, one of the biggest challenges our businesses faces is higher rent costs. So, one of the selling points for a coworking space is it provides below-market rate space for our businesses. And it's also a great place for entrepreneurs to kind of gather and share ideas, be with like-minded people who are passionate. So, that's another sell for coworking space. A great example of that is right here in Boynton Beach on Congress and Gateway, CoWork Boynton. It's an office space where remote workers, freelancers, self-employed individuals can come and collaborate. They, you can't just be a member of the public and walk in. You have to be a member of the space. You pay a monthly membership, or you can have, there's single-use options if you want to come in for the day and use a desk or a conference room. They have printers, scanners available, meeting rooms. And depending on their membership option, you have a fixed amount of visits per month to that, to that space. You get, there's some dedicated desk options as well. And also, you can access conferences by the hour. So, that's just an example of a coworking space. The next and final option that we researched is a maker space. Maker spaces tend to focus on STEM-focused technology. It's a shared space with shared equipment such as 3D printers, laser cutters, robotics machines. That's sort of the high-end level maker spaces. But they have all sorts of different kinds of maker spaces, whether it's for culinary, whether it's for tech. So, they have a lot of different options there. But they provide equipment and tools that you would normally get in someone's private home, and the public can access it. And they're usually housed in libraries and schools. A lot of K through 12 schools run programs using maker space as well as universities. And they also have an educational component to them. They offer classes and courses on how to use the equipment. And a great example of that is called Jackson Incubator Space. It's running out of the Jacksonville Public Library. Anybody with an active library card can utilize this maker space and the equipment, equipment there. They have guitars. They have 3D printing. They have, you know, video game design. And they offer classes on how to utilize all these. They offer recording equipment, musical instruments. They have what they call a digitalization station, green screen. So, they have a lot of equipment that the public can use. And as staff was doing some more research, we thought that the maker space would be best served in our library. Our library currently has some of these, has a 3D printer, has a digitalization station that they utilize, where they have podcast software. They have music software where they can record music. So, they already had that, had those components in there. So, we thought that would best be served in our public library. But I did want to just show you the option that that could have been an option for the space. After some more research, staff discussed it and decided the best use for the space would be a business incubator. And this graph just kind of shows the entrepreneur there in the middle, in highlighting the business incubator. Then also, the other bubbles kind of just highlight the other resources out there in the community. You have the Boynton Beach Maker Space in our public library, which can be, which can complement the incubator space. We have the coworking space that I mentioned, and all the CRA and city grant incentives that can help that entrepreneur flourish. And what this really shows is, if we provide that incubator within our new city hall in downtown, in Town Square, it can really show our business community that we're here to support you, really kind of lay that foundation that we want you to thrive. We want you to grow and stay here as a business in Boynton Beach. I think a great place for that would be downtown. And on top of that, the incubator, the city really thought it should be run by a third party. And we thought an educational institution would be the best option to run that space. They can offer the staffing and the expertise for the entrepreneurs, whether it's helping them write a business plan, whether it's marketing, brand management, legal counsel. There's so many different resources that a university or educational institution can offer. So, we thought that that might be the best use for the space, and we should run it in management because they can offer that expertise. And yeah, that's, that was the option that the city came up with. And I'll take any questions or comments or anything?
Yes.
Thank you for your presentation, John. I just want some clarification.
Yeah.
So, we're going to have this space, and presumably, we're going to find some third-party.
If we can.
Right. What exactly would be the role, I don't know if you've had this conversation yet, of our city staff? So, for example, I'm starting a business. I'm in this space. And I need help with marketing. Does that mean I go to Eleanor? Is, will city staff, what is a role of city staff, in other words?
We thought city staff should take ourselves outside of that space. We thought that space should be utilized and run by a third-party. We didn't want to have city staff stuck also running an incubator, like you said, if, with the example of marketing at Eleanor, just the time and the resources. We would like to have a third-party kind of run that and really bring that expertise to them.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
So, you know, regarding, you know, I was kind of hoping for the maker space. But if you're saying we're already having a maker space in the same building, it's kind of duplicative of having that. You know, I've, you know, as for the coworking spaces, you know, I feel like we already have a private coworking space in the city of Boynton Beach in that if you really need to, you have the different restaurants and coffee shops that are coming in. And so, with the incubator, I've been to, you know, was it Palm Beach Tech and FAU runway. And so, that third-party administrator of our incubator, do we, you know, how do we plan on selecting that person? Or, and then, what is their, going to be their goal? It's like, are we going to try to find a university or higher-level education? Or try to find another nonprofit? And are we focused, plan on focusing on a specific industry in that incubator versus just opening it up to everyone?
Yeah. So, we did want to almost solicit our public universities here locally, whether that's Palm Beach State, Lynn, you know, FAU, PBA. So, there's a lot of options. But we did want an educational institution to run it. And I know there's a certain process on how to go about soliciting them and selecting them appropriately. But that was our goal is to have an educational institution run it.
Okay. And I know that we have Palm Beach Atlanta coming to our Fire Station 5 to teach courses. And so, you know, that may be a new partnership that we haven't followed through with.
Absolutely.
All right.
John, excuse me, can you get me a copy of that so I can read it at my leisure? Because I don't know-
Absolutely.
Behind you, but you lost me like phew.
Absolutely. First tomorrow morning. You got it.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Of course.
All right. Is there any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Romulus?
Yeah, I, thank you very much. I'm excited about this. I simply just want to emphasize on a couple of things. Is it possible to merge the space? For example, why couldn't the incubator space also have a portion of it be used as a coworking space as well?
That, that could be an option. All of our options are on the table. Staff just recommended to be an incubator. Just due to the size of the space, it's not that big.
Okay.
So, if we did want to have a focus there- So if we, if we did want to have a focus there as an incubator, we really want to utilize all the space that we possibly could for an incubator.
Got it.
It's only 1,600 square feet, so it's really, that's
Okay, cool. And then the other question or, or kind of focus is, I, I had a meeting recently with a lot of culinary people, and they've been asking about increasing commissary space in Boynton Beach. I wouldn't necessarily advise this location be that, but is that something that you and David are working on to expand the footprint of commissary kitchens and, and community kitchens within the city to help more kind of, you know, out-of-the-box, non-conventional chefs and culinary people to kind of expand and really work on their craft?
Yeah, I mean, we'll do everything we can to, to help them. I know the Community Carrying Center just had their gig economy, and, and that was really focused on, on the culinary industry. We'll be more than happy to, to do that and, and help them in any way we can. They, and, and that is something that, like I mentioned before, a, a lot of the incubators and a lot of the Makerspaces, a lot of them have a certain focus. Culinary could be one of them. But yeah, I mean, David and I would be more than happy to kind of help with anybody who needs help with that, and, and helping promote that. Because I know that is a, a growing industry here in the city. It's a very important industry here in the city.
It is. Yeah, I, I think it's something to explore perhaps with the space, the space that Phoenix South Florida is building. I wonder if that's something, I'm just thinking out loud off the top of my head here, but maybe that's something that we can explore with them.
Absolutely, we'll do.
Thank you.
Have you already begun reaching out to universities?
No. We, we wanted to come as a, as staff and do our due diligence and research, then come to the public, as well as the commission, for, before we started doing anything like that.
Yeah, we'll probably, the next step, if that's the direction, I'm hearing that you're directing it, it's the, is we'll put out some kind of letter of interest and try to get some, request for letters of interest to try to get some interested in. Our partner has reached out to several universities and talked to them. So there has been some conversation, but we didn't want to start anything really official until we actually talked to you, and then you gave us some direction, and then we'll go out and start doing that, and start looking for the best partner.
So do you need the consensus to move forward with the incubator?
Consensus is fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Does anyone, everyone agree?
Yeah, until I agree, I go along with it, yeah.
All right. Yeah, there's your consensus?
Yes.
Good job, John.
Thank you.
You both agree with it.
Our next is the City Manager's Report. Staff will present an update of the status of the Town Square Master Plan.
So, I'm glad to be here to present. We, we're trying to do an update as often as we can. As y'all can tell, the buildings, there's built, the public buildings are coming out of the ground. If you've been by, you'll see it. Our new police station is already being closed in with windows. The interior framing is under, well underway, almost finished. The plumbing, electrical, and air conditioning is all, what? It's big. And it's a very big building. So if you haven't been by, hopefully we'll get you guys in that building here soon. We're going to work on some things. As you tell, City Hall is underway.
Wait, 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 stop. Completion date for that police department?
So we're still targeting the end of February. We, we have not had any delays as of yet on that station, although this storm, there may be two or three days that we have to provide a delay. Because one of the things I do want to say is, through E2L, our partner, our contractors did an excellent job wrapping up for the storm. They started Thursday tightening up their sites, and Friday afternoon, we went out to inspect them, they were tight. There was nothing going to blow around. They did a very, very good job getting the sites ready for any kind of storm event that would happen. So, we have great partners in this project. But we're underway. And so PD is the first building, well, actually, the old, the Cultural Center is going to be the first building, and that's shooting in end of October, beginning of November. We won't be using it for full events because we won't have any parking yet, but we'll be opening it and using it as much as we could with the limited parking that's available. The next building is the
Cultural Center is going to be when? October?
Uh, end of October, first week of November. We haven't picked an actual opening date yet. We're still trying to make sure everything is finished.
We have the chilled energy plant?
So, the, 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 actually, that's on the agenda tonight, too, some things. But the chill water plant is finished, for the most part. We are, we are going to be coming back to you with a, a little change order to that contract. We're going to add a third chiller. It's, it's, we found a way to actually do a better job running the, the equipment by adding some extra equipment to the, to the chiller. But it's ready to go. So all of that work is finished. Most of the underground utility work is finished. As you can tell, they've got Ocean all torn up, putting utilities in and getting that repaved. We will have Ocean finished and open before we open the Cultural Center. So that'll all be finished. City Hall is still scheduled for the
Hold on, go back to this chiller. Why are you all coming back to us? I'm, I'm just saying, you know, because
Right.
You know, for more, my take is that when we went through this, I felt that everything was thought out. When I voted for this, I asked you all, I said, have y'all thought everything out? I know things happen.
And, and that's what happened. What happened is, is the, the, the construction schedule has changed enough that we will not have enough of a load, which is amazing. You don't, we put the equipment in for the schedule that we knew six months ago. The schedule has changed enough that we, our equipment is actually too big to start up for the first year or so. So we found an opportunity, which actually, we think it's an opportunity, to, to buy what we call a swing chiller, which is a much smaller piece of equipment that allow us to run just one building right now. And then later on, it's going to allow us to be more energy-efficient in the plant. Because, I'll just talk science real quick, but there are 1,500-ton chillers. If I turn it on, I'm putting out either 750 tons of energy, or 1,500 tons of energy. We need something in between there. So if I need, if we need 1,000 tons, I can turn on 750 from the big one, and I can turn on the small one, which we're going to come back to you with, which is like 350. So I can split that difference, which will actually, in the long run, pay for itself very, very quickly. So yes, we're going to spend a little bit more upfront. It's going to pay, pay for itself later on. And you're absolutely right. If we'd have thought about it, we would have put it in from the very beginning. We didn't think about it until just a couple weeks ago. So, it's, it happened. So, but the project's coming along well. Again, City Hall's coming out of the ground. The floors are being poured. We will be doing the, the topping out. We delayed it at least a week because we lost a week from the storm. So we have to delay it. We'll get you a new date. So everything's going well. So today, what I wanted
But is the completion date for City Hall?
City Hall is middle of May. We're shooting for, my goal is the beginning of May to start moving people in. That's our goal. We're still shooting for that goal. We may, it may be the middle of May before we can start doing that.
June or July.
Yeah. And Lori's date is July 1st.
Realist over here.
But our schedule, our official schedule is July 1st. But the contractor does think that, that they're going to speed up a little bit and be able to get us in a little bit sooner. Whether or not we want to do it, we'll make that decision when it comes. I mean, we may want to take a little bit more time moving in to really make sure it's correct. But I want to get it finished as fast as possible. It gives us more time to get it moved, get moved in and get it up and running.
Let me ask a question. With the way y'all have that thing set up down there, but if a hurricane of five would have, would that thing still stood? That's my concern, because I was like
The engineers assured us, they spent, like I said, Thursday and Friday reinforcing all of the connections for that building to make sure that none of those walls would fall down in a hurricane. Because when it's finished, it will not. When it's finished, it's, it's, it's designed for that. But as you're right, the walls right now are a little bit loose, because there's nothing connecting them all. But they went in and they did some, a bunch of extra connections to make sure it was secured on Thursday and Friday. Again, they did an excellent job getting the building ready that's under construction. So
All right.
So, last thing I want to talk about is, is the, the, John Markey is here, and I'm going to give him a few minutes to talk about his, the private part of the development. But they've submitted for their plans, they've submitted some plans for permitting, and they've made some minor changes from the last time you saw the master site, master site plan. And those, those require approval and changes to the master site plan. The changes are small enough that under our code, they're administrative approvals. But since this is a partnership, and we're all in this together, for transparency, we wanted to bring it to you to show you what administratively we're going to approve. So I wanted to go through there. Just real quick, this is the site plan that you last approved with the revisions. It had a couple things on it that are going to be changed. One of them, if you remember, the center, the center parcel had an age restriction put on it. I think you're going to be happy with what we're going to be changing for that. And there's a couple of other changes. So, next slide, John? That's okay. We'll get there. There we go. We're, we're missing some technology tonight. So, a couple of the revisions are, the, the developer, JKM, is removing the age-restricted housing on the central building. So they're going to go to a full, uh, uh, structure at the middle site, increases the number of units from 104 to 169 units for that middle building. And then on the south, they're not changing the, the size of the building at all. It's just reducing the number of units. It's basically bigger units, and John will explain this better than I will when he, I hope. But it's really bigger units, but less of them. Staff has looked at it. We think it's a, it's a good change. They're very nice units. And it's also adding some very high-end luxury amenities to that building, which we think is actually a good idea. And it also is going to, we're, we're, we're moving on the street. We're going back to some on-street parking, some drop-off on Second, even though, you know, we said, it's still going to be very, very minimal traffic, because it's, it's only 196 units. The unit parking is still off of First, so it's not going to be on Second. This is just simply for gift drop-off and, and things like that. So it's still going to be fairly lightly-used, uh, uh, street. And then there were some minor revisions to the shared parking study to address all of these changes. So, those are the changes. And John, you can go to the next slide.
Wait, wait, before you go to the next slide.
Go ahead.
Let's stop.
Okay.
On the corner of Seacrest and Boynton Beach Boulevard.
Yes.
Where old City Hall was.
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Got it.
What's going to go there besides dirt?
That's the hotel site.
We got people looking at it.
And yes, we do. We, we have an offer that's in. It's being reviewed by staff.
Okay, hotel. That's what I thought. Okay.
Go ahead. Is that good? Okay. Next slide. Again, these are just highlighting where those changes are. On Southeast Second, the building, and the building unit changes. It didn't, we're not changing the overall number of units, just shifting the units from the south building to the middle building and taking that age restriction off. And I know that some of y'all had some issues with the age restriction. So I think that's a very good thing for the project, to, to developers offering to remove that and, and build some standard apartments. So with that, if you don't have any questions for me, I'm going to ask John to come up and talk a little bit more about the, the progress of his, the private development portion of the project.
For the record, John Markey, Delray Beach, Florida. Good to be here tonight, Commissioners. Always a, a privilege and a pleasure to address this august board. I wanted to hit, first of all, on our progress. We did receive a permit for the south garage, a building permit for the south garage yesterday. Staff was excellent at hurrying that through. I'm a little bit in disbelief at how fast staff and, thank you, Colin, got that done. So we're, we're well underway. And yes, I don't want to leave anybody out, Lori.
No, no, three days. We did it in three days.
I wasn't accounting for the hurricane in the
All right.
I should have.
I'm not trying to steal y'all's thunder. If y'all could do it for them in three days, why y'all can't do it for other people?
That's a good question.
Thank you, Commissioner.
We're working on it. Other people are going to see the same thing. So we're working on it.
I was going to let them have their shine for a little bit.
Sorry, John.
But I, I really think that's a good example of this partnership and, and how closely we've been able to work specifically with staff and the community and the commission. When I say public-private partnership, we take that word partnership very seriously. My whole firm, and I, I take that very seriously, as does staff. And so it's been a great relationship. And the main thing that I'd like to talk to you about this evening is removing that age restriction. I stood at this podium not long ago when we approved that master plan, and I think unanimously, this board, this commission said, we don't like the age restriction. Staff has been very clear that they do not like the age restriction. We removed it. Now, we're starting with the south building first, and we redesigned those units, as Colin hit on, to be larger units and more luxury-type units. We will be trying to market those to some over 55 people. But if you're 30 years old, if you're 12 years old, you're welcome to live here. So no more age restrictions anywhere in the project. We heard you. We heard you loud and clear. So, timing-wise, you know, I don't want to jump the gun too much, but Commissioner McCray asked about the hotel. We've been cooperating with E2L, the city's partner, and city staff on trying to figure out how to accelerate that hotel and how to accelerate that north garage. So, I don't want to jump into that too much, but a lot of efforts are going on. And I also heard from this commission, last time I was here, that we need to hear from you more often. So, I'm here. Thank you for the presentation, Colin. If you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you very much, John, for coming tonight. And, and thank you to everybody, including staff, for, for bringing things to us. I know that administratively, some of these changes can be made, but to avoid any concerns after the fact, I like the idea that it's being at least shown to us for input, since it's such a critical project. My big questions, I guess, are, are on timelines. As best as you can describe them. Some of the previous comments, you know, the, the chiller plant moving forward pretty pace, patiently there. Police, fire, City Hall, when can we, and I drive down Ocean as much as I can, you know, in the mornings sometimes before work, just to see some of the progress. But I don't usually stray to the south, towards your, your southern property. How close are we to getting the garage construction underway and, and paving the way for that residential on the south end specifically?
We would like to be out of the ground fourth quarter of this year, which fourth quarter of this year is right around the corner. At this point, we are going to submit for the hotel, or, excuse me, the apartment building adjacent to the south garage, the southernmost apartments, within a week for building permit. We need to get to a guaranteed maximum price in a contract before any bank will close on the financing. That means the financing for the apartment building and for the garage. They both have to be financed together. That's a four-to-six-week effort. So that's why I say a, a start in the, the last quarter of this year would be, you know, our, our best-case scenario. Worst-case scenario, I'm going to tell you, is first quarter, early first quarter of next year.
How, how quickly once shovels in the ground and garage, starting to completion of the garage and then the residential, would you estimate, assuming fourth-quarter start?
Our, our current schedule shows the garage being finished in June of next year. So we're approximately equivalent to the, the CO of the City Hall. I think we could probably exceed that if we're doing a TCO, a Temporary Certificate of Occupancy. The garage goes up much, much faster than the apartment buildings. The apartment buildings are larger, more complex buildings, and they're, they're not precast construction, which, if you know precast, it goes up like tinker toys, goes up very fast. So the garage will be finished much sooner than the, the apartment buildings. If we could get a certificate of occupancy and, and start leasing and occupying those buildings last quarter of next year, I think that's very reasonable, very, very realistic.
So based on all that residential on the south end, last quarter of 2020?
Correct.
Okay. You mentioned financing. Obviously, there, there are steps that need to go into whatever documents ultimately get signed, but the financing is secured for, for these different parcels, whether it's north, central, south? Or is it just south and central and north comes after, or?
It, it's currently secured. We, we do have a commitment and actually a $3.5 million mortgage with City National Bank on all three parcels. They've committed to financing all of the construction. But frankly, we are shopping that financing around right now because rates change. We all watch the news. We know rates change and terms change from lenders. So we're currently in the, in the final steps of shopping some different construction lenders right now. I think it probably ends up being City National with a modification of that current mortgage that they have on all three parcels. But it may be somebody else, or it may be City National with a participant.
Okay. So worst case, we have, we have a deal for financing, but we're seeking better terms as things move forward?
That's correct.
Okay. So if, if the south side garage and residential, fourth quarter 2020, what about the central building, parking and, or I guess residential?
The, the central building, we feel, is farther out. And it's going to have to be, you know, sometime in the first and second quarter start of 2021. And the reason for that, as, as I've explained often, and I've explained to staff many times, you have to understand what we're trying to do here in Boynton. We're actually pushing the market. We're taking a step that is a bit ahead of the curve. And we can do that because we believe in the community and we believe in the market. But where the problem lies is getting the finance world to believe that. And, you know, if, if I'm being honest, if I'm being frank, to get this first building done is a big step. We've already taken a big step with City National to get that done. So, you know, we've got to prove out the market with this first building. We've got to get that up. We've got to show we can perform and we can lease before anybody's going to lend money on the next building. That's just the way the finance world works.
Okay. So then, that was hypothetically central residential completion, first, second quarter 2021?
I'm sorry, which building?
The central residential. You said first, first or second quarter?
We would be starting.
Starting. Okay. And then the final component? Starting. Okay. And then, the final, um, component of it, the north side, I guess, residential garage and potential hotel, what would be the timelines on those?
I, I'm not the hotel developer, but I'm going to go out on a limb here and tell you that I think the hotel can happen much faster. Part of the reason we're working right now with staff to try and accelerate the hotel and the parking that the hotel needs is because we realize the, the urgency. You know, the hotel wants to hit the market. And all the market studies tell us the demand is there. So, we're pedaling as fast as we can to make that hotel and the garage start.
When, um, so, the, the hotel's pretty much contingent on parking in the garage, correct? That's a big aspect of it?
Absolutely, Commissioner.
So, what about, so what about the garage and, um, the residential on the north side of the project? It's, as far as timeframes, is that, when we say 20, um, I guess, 2021 was the start of the central, when would we anticipate start of or completion of the final phase, the north phase?
You know, I have to be honest again and tell you that we have not projected that exact time because we know we have to prove the market out. We have to prove out the market with the first building on the south. I think that the second building in the center parcel on Ocean is also part of proving that market out. But, I will tell you that we are trying to accelerate the garage itself, getting built ahead of the, the apartments and the retail and, and restaurant, because we know the hotel needs it. And we also believe we're at a point where we figured out a way to finance that. I don't want to be premature in telling the Commission this, but we've committed to having this open dialogue. I, I'm working, and staff is working hard on getting together some alternative to, to make that financing happen and that construction of the hotel and the garage happen. But, I'd do a disservice to staff if I told you what that's all about right now. I think if you gave us another couple of weeks, we'd be able to tell you something much more concrete.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I think my last question, um, is just, and it's, it's a terrible question, but it's such a big project that I want to hear the good, the bad, and the ugly. Is there anything perceived right now to be an impediment to the delivery of each of these phases? So, I know that, like, financing obviously is an underlying, the underlying issue, um, and securing that as things progress. But, is there anything else right now, as early as we can ascertain, that needs to be investigated further or looked into to assure that a speed bump in the future can be averted if there are potential speed bumps?
The biggest speed bump I could ever see, and really honestly, the only one that I see, is the market itself. What is the market demand for what we've proposed? I'm a believer. I'm here with an awful lot of money invested, an awful lot of time invested, an awful lot invested in this, uh, relationship with the community and the city. So, I'm a believer. Uh, I see no obstacle other than, is there a change in the marketplace? When I say that, I'm talking about things like escalation in construction costs. That's always a worry for me. I worry about that a lot. Beyond that, I worry about major things. Is there a madman in the White House that drops a bomb on Iran? And I don't say that to be political. I say that because we've all been through these things. We've seen people drive airplanes into towers. I, I worry about those kinds of things. That's pretty, that, we can say that's pretty far-fetched, but we've seen airplanes fly into tire, towers.
Okay. All right. I, I, again, I want to thank you for, for coming in and updating us. And, and as you said, maybe in a couple of weeks, um, as things progress, we might be able to get a, a slightly better timeline for the second and, and third, the central and northern phase. But, um, I, I do appreciate the partnership. And, like I said, I drive down there and try to have breakfast every couple of days on Ocean Avenue to kind of catch a glimpse of the progress. And I'm extremely excited to see what's to follow, um, particularly on the, the south end, because that's the next, the next big step. So, thank you again.
Maybe I can join you for breakfast one of those visits.
I run, I ran into, to Mark up there today, so we can certainly set something up.
What do you eat at?
Uh, I bring my dog to East Ocean Cafe because you can bring your dog to East Ocean Cafe.
Any other questions from the board?
Uh, no questions. Just a, a comment. Um, in my other role, the other board that I sit on, which is the Palm Beach County Tourist Development Council, um, I, I just want to tell you, um, and Mark and, and, and staff, just, uh, you know, Jorge Pescuera, who is the president and CEO of Discover the Palm Beaches, along with George Lindley and, and all the other individuals up there, um, just can't stop singing your praises and stop singing the praises of our city here and, and the work that we're doing. And, uh, they've been doing a lot of just, you know, behind the scenes, kind of boosting up Boynton Beach and, and all the things that we're doing and trying to basically make us a, a example for other cities and, and, um, uh, uh, organizations to follow. So, uh, that's just, you know, a, a bit of good news to bring back to staff and to bring back to, uh, you all as our partners, to just let you know that, uh, you know, we, we were, we're creating a lot of buzz, um, with this project. And we, uh, you know, as we go forward, um, just like Vice Mayor Katz mentioned, uh, you know, I'm, I'm right there on Woolbright. So, almost every day, I, I skip the Woolbright exit just to go on the Boynton Beach exit so I could pass by City Hall and pass by the construction site and see what's going on. Um, you know, so, it, it's exciting for, for all of us and everybody's really just kind of waiting to see these, these projects and, and see their final, um, their final outcome. So, uh, thank you for, for the work that you're doing and for just putting Boynton Beach on the map and, and continuing to have us be a positive point of conversation around the county.
Thank you, Commissioner. I, I agree with you. What, what we're doing here is groundbreaking. And I say "we" as in the city and, and I. But, you know, it's groundbreaking.
Literally.
Yes.
Hopefully, more. It comes down the road.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And so, one of the things I wanted to bring up with the Commission, not necessarily about that item, is the branding of the town square master plan. Um, what name that we want to have for the future of our downtown. And so, I'd like to see it with the Commission's approval, put that as a future agenda item, so that we have the branding of our new downtown.
Branding?
Branding, yeah.
Be like a name like Rosemary, whatever they're doing, the City Place, or?
Correct.
Okay.
Because, you know, we're not a town and it's not square. So-
[laughing]
So-
I'm in favor of having that discussion.
All right. Excellent. All right. And then, moving on to legal, proposed, uh, resolution number 19-091, authorizing the city to set rates, fees, and charges for water, wastewater, stormwater, and reuse water for the upcoming fiscal year 2019-20. Is that what I got in the, the mail?
Yes.
Yes, that is. Um, we have a short presentation. We, we covered this in the, in the budget workshops, but we have a very short presentation, and Joe will do it, keep it very, very short. Because we do want to show that while we are adjusting rates, one is going down, some are going up. Um, we want to show you where we are. We're very proud that we're one of the lowest in the county still. Um, we have a very healthy utility again, and I like to brag about this every time it comes up. Um, the, these guys do a great job keeping the costs low and keeping the quality high. So, I'm going to have Joe go through this extremely quickly.
Stop talking.
Make it really quick.
I don't start talking.
Charles, sooner you start.
All right.
Not quite that-
The sooner he starts, the sooner-
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Joe Paterniti, Utility Director. Um, can you back up a couple, please? Not that quick.
We're really trying to get him out of here, aren't we?
As you know, we had the, uh, workshops with you all in, uh, July, and we went through our, our utility management, uh, automation program. And we came up with utilizing the, uh, uh, Consumer Price Index, as we utilize those to, uh, generate the rates. And, and this is the, uh, the changes that we're going to need in our rates to cover our, our anticipated costs for the upcoming fiscal year. We're going to be increasing the water rate by 2%. And we'll show you in, in the next few slides what that means to our, um, in, uh, to our water bills. Uh, we're decreasing the wastewater rate by 1%, increasing the reclaim rate 3% and 50% on the stormwater rate. And this is, you know, required to meet our, uh, projected, um, expenditures. Next slide. In the middle of these graphs, uh, or tables, we show the, uh, existing rate plus the, uh, the proposed rate for, um, inside and outside, um, city, residential, commercial. This one here is, um, inside city. Um, and we show the, the base rate going up from $25.30 to $25.81. And then, we have a tiered rate structure that shows, you know, for the first, um, uh, 9,000 gallons, the, the rate is going up from $1.69 per thousand to 1.72. And the same thing, uh, we want to show, uh, for the, um, uh, residential below, going up from, uh, 12.65 to 12.90. And then, the next slide shows the outside city rates, uh, increasing as well for water, um, with commercial and residential. Next slide. Make it real quick here. Next slide, please. Thank you. This is the wastewater rate decrease, and it decreases 1% as you can see, um, for, uh, outside, uh, the city as well as inside the city, uh, for wastewater. So, that shows the difference in the, the rates there. Um, and then, on the bottom, we show the increase in the stormwater rate and the increase in the re, reuse rate per thousand gallons. And what does this mean on the next slide is, uh, is already up there. Uh, we showed that the, uh, inside city rate, uh, for a typical water bill, uh, for 3,000 gallons residential, increased from $51.25 to $51.86. And you see on the next slide over the outside, uh, city, uh, water bill as well. So, those are the rates that we're anticipating improving tonight. Next slide shows where we stack up in the rest of the area. We're, we show our rates as, as being very reasonable associated with other communities. So, that's kind of where we're at today, and we're asking for you to approve the, the rates for the utility. And I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
Shouldn't I use that picture?
No, no.
It's a sore spot right now.
I shouldn't.
Fail.
Joe's job is on the line if he doesn't-
Yes, he is.
Absolutely, absolutely. Working very diligently to get, get the lights back on. Thank you, Commissioner.
Is there any update on that, by the way? Anything?
It's a, it's a customized system, so we're waiting for, um, uh, equipment to be re-manufactured so they can get it down to us.
Is there any timeline?
I haven't been able to get a timeline from them. As soon as I do, I will share it with you all. Unfortunately, we don't have that tonight.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Moving on to ordinance number 19-028. Jim?
An ordinance of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 26 Water, Sewer, and City Utilities, creating Article 9 entitled "Chilled Water," providing for purpose and intent, definitions, district energy, plant, customer contracts, fees, system maintenance, and water loss notice of violation and failure to remedy, providing for conflict servability, codification, and an effective date.
All right. May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Second reading, any discussion from the audience? Seeing none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
All right. Um, for the future agenda, the one thing that we had two comments regarding the public, from the public regarding the property, um, just on, on Lake Ida, that is adjacent to Boynton Beach that Delray Beach is trying to annex. And so, I'd like to put that under future agenda for next, uh, Commission meeting's legal discussion.
Is that, is that enough time for staff to-
Yes, for that one, no.
Oh, yes.
So, we won't have it as future. We'll have a report for you.
Okay. So, yeah, we'll put it on for the legal.
Yes.
All right. Is there anything else from the, the board regarding future?
And when you bring that back, just have as, as much background information and data on that as possible.
I'll have a written report. That will be included in the agenda packet, so you'll be fully prepared to discuss it.
Thank you.
And the options.
All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
It's adjourned.